No further reportable action was taken. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please stay standing for the invocation.
Let's pray. Lord, we take some time right now to remember that it's by your will and grace that we can come here. And it's by your truth and wisdom that we can make the decisions that we do for the greater good of this community. I thank you for these leaders who've taken the time and the energy and the sacrifice to look at the needs of our community, to lead us in our current events of our state, our nation, and how it implicates us here. And I pray that, yeah, you give them the leading that they need to be the leaders that you've called them to be. Bless them, Lord, and bless our time this evening. May your presence be felt. We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dean Uker.
Here.
Daniel DeGraff.
Here.
Dave Parks.
Here.
Vice Mayor Leo Zubor.
Here.
Mayor Mike Mstusha.
President. Public discussion, this is the time if anybody has something to bring up, limit three minutes per person, thirty minutes total. If it's something that's not on the agenda, so please state your name and address, and you can go to the podium if anybody has anything to say.
My name's Joseph Laswell, here on behalf of Love Rippen. All right. Mr. Mayor, City Council, distinguished leadership of our community, and people of the audience. My name is Joseph Laswell, and I am the chairman of Love Rippen, and I consider it a real privilege to be here this evening. I also have brought several of our Love Rippen board members with us, and we are here tonight to share two great things going on with Love Rippen in our community. So first is to share some of our excitement and anticipation for Love Rippen 2018. April 21st, Saturday, April 21st, save the date if you haven't already. Will be another great year of our community coming together. We're going to host our annual rally at the community center as we have in years past. It's been a tremendous response at the rally, just a neat time for our, many of our different people of our community to gather in that morning, in that environment. We've had great participation from the police department and fire department, and just a neat opportunity to come together and talk about what we do, how we can accomplish a lot when we come together, how that reflects and makes up our community. This year, we'll have a variety of projects again, everything from almost all of our schools, the parks, various projects spread out across the city, as well as a talent show for Loving on Our Seniors at Bethany Home. We've had really good feedback and response from that particular project. And we've had a lot of requests to have a kid-friendly project where some of the younger kids have an opportunity to serve. We will be participating in the Almond Blossom Parade, so look out for the big red hearts. We had an interesting logo t-shirt design contest this year, and we announced that on Facebook and announced that at several of the high school, or a couple of our high schools, and allowing the kids an opportunity to get involved and submit their art project for our t-shirt this year. You know, Love Rippen really gives a variety of our community members an organized opportunity to serve. Many people want to serve, but they just don't know how or how to get involved. And so that's really one thing that Love Rippen represents, is giving our community an opportunity to serve. So this year, April 21st, Saturday, April 21st, we have great momentum this year, tremendous momentum. Businesses are calling us, asking us, how can they get involved? And different service organizations, certainly a lot of our churches have responded. And so, you know, one of my favorite proverbs is, "As a city prospers, the people rejoice." So tonight, we're here rejoicing with you and sharing a lot of that excitement for this year. So the second item that we have is to present the council member a banner that we actually had created last, Love Rippen 2017. And so what you see here is a variety of different responses on why you love this city. These are community members, these are our community members' leadership that have said, hey, thank you for what you're doing, thank you for allowing me to raise my family in this kind of environment, and I love the city that I live in. And that's what you'll read here if you got a chance to study some of these responses. And so we've asked if you'd consider maybe hanging this up in City Hall as we're promoting Love Rippen this year, and giving the people that come in and out of there an opportunity to see that. And we just think it brings good energy and good excitement. So with that, we would like to take advantage of the opportunity to thank all of you for your hard work and commitment. And it's people from many of the years past that have made our city so great. And it's your commitment and hard work right now that is making the city great for years to come and for my kids' future as well. So thank you for all of that. That's it.
Well, thank you for all that you do. We do appreciate it, and we'll give that to staff and let them figure the best place to put it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do we want to? All of us? Okay. Would you like a picture with all of you and us holding that sign? Because Mr. DeGraff would like us to have one. I didn't bring it up, Mr. DeGraff did.
Put him on one end.
That's right, put him front and center.
We'll have the pillars and Leon one side and Dan on the other.
Okay, anybody else?
Hi, my name is Gina Buffalo, and I am here regarding the skate park. My son and many of his friends, who are students here in Rippen, enjoy riding their scooters at the skate park. We understand that that currently is not permitted, and I'm sure there are various reasons for that. But myself and other moms here would like to perhaps open a dialogue to see what we could do to potentially change that, so that our sons can enjoy riding their scooters at the skate park.
Hi, I'm Vicki Eddy. I live at 317 Linda Avenue here in Rippen. And there was a bill passed in, let me look, I'm so sorry, 2014, an all-wheels bill. It's Assembly Bill 1146 that was signed into law. All people who wish to use skate parks with all-wheeled, non-motorized devices will be able to utilize the great parks of California cities and the counties have to offer. This bill also provides local governments the ability to allow these devices, other than skateboards, to be used without fear of litigation. He added, "I'm pleased that Governor Brown recognized the current code regarding skate parks needed to be updated to allow greater use of the public parks." While this reform was initiated by the County of San Diego, it will benefit both park users and taxpayers alike throughout the state and hopefully Rippen. It's really sad when your kid gets chewed out of the skate park, and it's a beautiful day, and then they have to go home, and it's like, then they get on their Xbox or whatever. We'd all rather have them outside, you know, enjoying what we have in our little town. Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I would add that I've monitored all of our children at the same time, and they are all very respectful of taking turns. And in fact, they're so worried about getting kicked out of skate park that they make sure that they are kind of giving the skateboarders free rein before they go down the ramps. But I would think that there's a lot more useful things that we could have our police officers doing than monitoring a skate park and kicking these poor eleven, twelve, thirteen-year-old kids out of the skate park versus, you know, monitoring the city itself. So we're trying to gain some understanding as to why. I actually spoke to a new police officer, his name was Justin, I can't remember his last name, about a month ago, and he shared, I showed him the legislation in the bill, in fact, I even sent it to my son and showed him, told him to show the police officer the next time he got stopped at the skate park, and they still kicked them out. So we're trying to gain an understanding as to why the city's not allowing or honoring the assembly or the bill that was passed in 2014.
My name is Monica Molten. I reside at 524 Meadowland Drive. My son is one of the many sons that do, many children that do use their scooters at the skate park. Like she mentioned, we, all the parents do monitor our children while they're there primarily. On the occasions that I've been there, I have actually observed other people on skateboards smoking marijuana and other things like that at the skate park, which as I understand it, the skateboarders are the ones that are, the only ones that are allowed to be at the skate park. So our kids that are on the scooters are usually the younger ones. Those are not the ones that are causing the issues, or maybe calls for service with the police department at that location. So we would just, as she mentioned, like an understanding of why the skateboarders aren't allowed to, I'm sorry, the scooters aren't allowed at the skate park.
So I have a question. We're not supposed to have dialogue during public discussion, but has anybody of you come in and talked to staff of reasons why or why not? Have you tried to get an understanding from the city administrator and the city attorney?
As I understand it, apparently the insurance for the skate park doesn't allow for anything other than
So you have spoken with them already?
Unless I'm speaking out.
Yes, no, that's exactly what they told me too, the liability reason.
Well, I would suspect you probably should come back in and talk them about that, because we can't override liability issues, but I, we shouldn't have this dialogue in public, but
Okay.
But share that, share that, share that with them, and that'd be, that'd be great, that they'll get the dialogue going again, if you don't mind.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Jason Loughlin. I'm here on behalf of Assemblyman Heath Flora. Just to give you guys a brief update, and the community a brief update, of what the Assemblyman is doing at the Capitol. Later in January, this past month, Assemblyman Heath Flora introduced AB 1914, which would add seven more crimes to the list of crimes that would exempt you from allowing to work in a care facility where our most vulnerable are located, such as foster homes or senior facilities. Currently, the law, with the way the law is set up, if you've been convicted of identity theft or more violent crimes such as rape, pimping, pandering, you can still work in a facility where you take care of the elderly or foster youth. So this bill would prevent that. And if, there are more copies of what I have here describing the bill a little more in depth at that back table. And if you have any more questions, my business cards are at the back table as well, and that is my update. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason, appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Seeing nobody, we'll move on to the approval of the January 9th minutes.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion. Hold on, let me, let me set it up.
Where is it?
Okay.
Wait a minute. Oh.
Okay, 5-0. Consent calendar, we need an approval for the consent calendar as presented or modified. Oh, excuse me, agenda. We have a motion to approve the agenda?
Wait, I have one change. I'd like to pull item 1.4G from the consent calendar.
Okay. And I want to pull 1.4C. Hope I got the number right.
Recycling Center?
Uh, yes, it takes, no. I had it right in my notes. Bear with me just half a second. It's the Boat Country, which deal is that? There must be a resolution.
Yeah, that's later.
What is that?
It's 2.1.
Okay, well, then I don't need to pull it. Okay, we'll pull 1.4G, correct? Is that it?
Yep.
Okay, so we have approval of the consent calendar as modified? Yes, just one, 1.4G.
So we have first, but we need a second.
Correct, so we have a mover?
I'll second it.
Okay. Consent calendar approved as modified, 1.4G. Leo?
No. You want to approve the consent calendar first, then do mine.
Okay, let's approve the consent calendar. Do you have a motion? Okay.
Second.
Where is it?
Stinking.
Wait. Yeah, there you go.
There we go.
Okay, 1.4G. Mr. Zubor.
I wasn't sure from looking at the picture, but, or the map, but this only applies to the part of the property on the east side of industrial that we bought for the multimodal station?
That's correct. It's on the east side, it's closest to where the water tower sits now.
Okay, so the parking lot and all the recycling center stuff, that's not part of this?
That's correct.
Okay.
Then I'll move to approve 1.4G.
Okay, motion?
Second. Permission.
Hold on. Okay. Motion carries. Now we go to Resolution 2.1.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'll take that one. As you know, we didn't have this on the consent calendars, just to kind of highlight, highlight this a little bit. As Council's aware, for some time now, the City Council has desired and has taken many steps to increase the city's economic position by becoming more competitive with our surrounding communities when it comes to non-residential growth. Another main objective of the Council was to work on changing Rippen's negative image in the development community pertaining to non-residential development. Change of this magnitude and improving Rippen's reputation in the development community does take some time. And as such, the City Council has taken many steps in improving Rippen's image over the last several years. In an effort to move towards those goals, the Council has taken many steps to that end. Just to highlight a few, in 2015, the Council did approve the North Point specific plan, which is the whole area out there between Jacktown and Fulton, out to the sports park, approving a lot of higher density residential and some commercial that would kind of bolster that area. They adopted a resolution in 2016, actually reducing the benefit assessment fees that were out on some of the properties, actually kind of reducing those, so we could spur on a little bit of development there. As you know, we did complete a Rippen video showcase, which we did many videos around town, one of them including economic development, that you can see on the city's website. Such a, like a marketing tool that was done in 2016. One of the big steps is we amended the PFFP fee program to be more competitive with our surrounding communities. As such, we, the commercial fees were lowered by 9.6%. Professional office went down by 19.1%. And light industrial went down by ten and a half, 10.5%. And then we also, one of the last steps we did was implement an economic development incentive program. We did that in May of 2017. So basically, with all that being said, the resolution that's attached here is to adopt the Resolution for Boat Country, who is actually the first business here in town to take advantage of our new incentive program. They are actually underway right now by tractor supply. They're building about roughly a 20,000 to 22,000 square foot facility out there on a two-acre site. So that should be finishing up here this summer. And with that, I turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any questions? I have, I have a question, Ken. So the fourth whereas, it says that Rippen has agreed to incentivize by reducing the transportation fee. Aren't we really deferring it?
We reduced that fee by the amount there, sixty, roughly 67,000, and then we are backfilling that with sales tax money that's generated over that, with that business over the next two to five years. So it was a reduction to the developer, however, we backfilled that actually with general fund money, and then as, as sales tax comes in, we replenish that.
But they are paying it back?
They are not. We, they are, they get a reduction.
Well, they're paying it back through the sales tax, the generation of sales tax, yeah.
Yes.
No, I get all that, I just want to make sure that this isn't a gift that we're giving money away. It is coming back in based on the revenue.
Correct, on the anticipated sales tax.
I know what it's supposed to do, I just want to make sure the wording's right.
Yes, so what's happening there, in order to keep the PFFP fee, the accounts, the cap, the accounts in, in order, and to keep them at whole, we took, the money comes out of the general fund, goes into the transportation account, so that's not shorted at all, and then we basically replenished that with sales tax revenue generated.
And so, is it being repaid back with 100% of what we get, the sales tax from them every year? Are we taking a certain percentage of it, or how are we doing that?
Um, I, that would be something, maybe Kevin can answer on that.
And let's say the sales tax from them is $10,000 the first year, do we take all 10,000 and apply it, or?
This is to transfer that money from the general fund to the transportation account, and we're to track it over whatever number of years it takes to get repaid. But essentially, the money's going back into the general fund.
So if they, so if they generate $66,000 in sales tax first year, it's paid back to first year, got it? Okay. Okay. So we need a motion into
Make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
A motion and a second. Okay. Motion passes 5-0. Public hearing, this is a, public hearing to provide residency opportunity to hear recommendation on proposed projects and provide comments to City Council based on community development block grant and homes program. Do you want to give a staff report first, and we'll open a public hearing?
Sure, yep, thank you. And there's a recommended action after the public hearing is closed too. So every year, this time of the year, we go through the grant, CDBG grant, money that comes into the city. Roughly, we received, we will receive about 81,500 this year, and 20,000, roughly $21,000 in home funds. 15% of that 81,000 is earmarked for public service providers within the city of Rippen that serve the elderly or the poor. So roughly about $12,000 goes towards those, and we do have an application process for that. We did receive one application directly to the city of Rippen this year for those funds. Bethany Home, every year, applies for those. It's Meals on Wheels program that they provide for their seniors. So we are suggesting we fund them fully for that, which they were requesting $5,000. And then through the county, there's several other organizations through the county that actually provide services in the city of Rippen, but they also provide services in Tracy, Manteca, and Escwan. So they typically get a chunk of money from each of the communities, depending on how many people they serve. So in the staff report, you'll see that San Joaquin County Human Services Agency, they do a Meals on Wheels program too, they requested 2,000. The San Joaquin County Fair Housing, which we're required to fund every year at $1,000, is in there again. And then the Emergency Food Bank, which is another San Joaquin County program. Mobile's Farmer, Farmer's Market serves some people in Rippen, they're asking for 3,000. So the amount of funds are being asked for is 11,000, which does not exceed the 12,000 which is available. So we're recommending funding all those fully in the amounts they're requesting. And then the remaining funds, the roughly 65,500, is money that can go towards public works projects. We've seen over the years, we've done a lot of handicap ramps around town, because those were some of the only projects we could spend this, spend the money on at that time. However, they, there have been some other project availabilities coming up with the, in certain parts of our town. And so there's a list on here, we went through last year with the Council on that list, and we just actually went out to bid for the project that was approved last year, which was resurfacing the senior center parking lot. And then there were some handicap ramps and sidewalk improvements over by Rippen High School that are being tackled. This year, we are recommending that we fund the senior center retrofit project. The senior center is in need of, of actually putting in a new HVAC system, updating some existing flooring and stuff with the carpet and some tile in the building, and then maybe improving the front facade of the building with an outdoor seating area or patio area for the seniors. So that, that project cost, we haven't gone out and had an architect designing the facade improvements. So we're not exactly sure the cost on that. We did estimate that to be about $87,000 for that project. So we are recommending that we take the $65,000 in funds and allocate those to that project. And then whatever's short on that, we could actually, next year's funds, we could actually make sure they, they cover the remaining on that. So those are the projects that we, staff is recommending get funded with the, with the money that's coming in. And at this time, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, and be happy to answer.
Thanks, Ken. I'll open it up to the Council if they have any questions or comments first, and I'll go to the public hearing, and then turn it back over to the Council again. Any questions, comments?
I have one. Will we have an architect's estimate by next year so that we can see what we're up against to get this project done?
Yes, if we allocate these funds towards that project, it can cover some of the design costs as well. So we can use some of this funding to hire the architect to put together a plan. And then next year, we can take what they've estimated, say it comes in a little bit higher, we can take the remainder of that and say, okay, we're going to, we want to allocate this, the right, remaining funds here to cover the rest of that project, and we could kick that project off next year.
Okay. I have one other question too. I seem to recall when we allocated the last amount of money, we hadn't done anything for two or three years, and it was a couple hundred thousand dollars. And we were told at that time that it was dangerous to hold on to money, because HUD doesn't like giving money to people that they don't use. They would rather give it someplace else. Keeping that in mind, looking at that list, the other things on that list, at $60,000 a year, it would take 10 years to, and so in effect, those aren't viable projects for this, are they?
They are, and they aren't. Actually, there's a couple ways to look at that. So the county administers the funds, and so they have, they get a large pot of money from HUD, and then they distribute it out to the participating cities. So we roughly get 81,000 or so, city of size of Tracy gets several hundred thousand as such, just depending on population and poverty levels in the different towns. You can possibly hold money over from year to year and build that pot. If everybody's doing that at the same time, it gets dangerous, because HUD looks at the overall account balance that the county's holding for, for the communities. If one community like Rippen was trying to hold over 81,000 for several years to reach a goal of a couple hundred thousand to tackle an alley project per se, it might be fine. We'd want to work with the county on that ahead of time. There's also been discussions at the county level to come up with an agreement where we enter in, an agreement with other cities, where they could possibly use our money for a year or two, and then when we need a year or two, and then when we need to use the eighty-one thousand, we've, we've kind of given it away for a couple of years, but then we get that money back, because like say Tracy's used it, and then, then we get to use our funds like year number three, and we've built that pot money from eighty-one thousand every year. So then the funds are still being spent down from HUD's perspective. We just have an agreement between the communities that we're kind of, you know, lending money per se, year to year, to different projects.
Okay. Thank you.
So do you, what do you sign a note? They pay, they owe us the money regardless of whether they get the money the next year or not?
There's kind of a co-op agreement. Like, if someone was saying that the Regional Transit District does that with some of the funds with, between the communities, and so they're, they're looking in, we're looking in, there's a group that's looking into the county as well as the cities looking into putting something together like that, where the, the funds could be pooled and shared that way to where it's.
We never pay it back, though. That's what I'm concerned about. Thanks. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, let me open up the public hearing. If anybody has any comments they want to make, please come to the podium. Okay, make a line. Seeing nobody, we'll close the public hearing. Any other comments? Okay, so the, approve the, the action is to approve the recommended twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen CBG and home program funds. Hey, slow down.
I'll move to approve, or, or then I'll second.
Waiting for you, Jake. Okay. Motion carries. Second is general plan amendment. This is a public hearing on a request to amend the general plan, land use designation and zoning classification on one parcel located eight thirty-nine West Main Street for Ripon Christian Schools. Ken, is that you again?
Mr. Mayor, prior to the staff report, I would note that I own property within three hundred feet of the site. Someone recused myself at this time. Call me back when the signing's over.
Okay. Leave yourself alone.
Okay. Are you sure?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ken, staff report, please.
Well, council members, Ripon Christian Schools, sometime back across an application to, they want to demolish an existing residence located at eight thirty-nine West Main Street in order to construct about an eighty-two hundred square foot preschool complex, which is adjacent to their school site. The application also included a general plan land use amendment and rezone of the property in order to facilitate the proposed development. As part of the conditions of approval of the project, a traffic impact analysis was required to ensure that development of the site as a preschool would not worsen traffic or levels of service on Main Street in the vicinity of, of the site. The report, which is attached, was attached to the staff report, indicates that with implementation of a few mitigation measures, the Ripon Christian Preschool's access on Main Street should operate satisfactorily, satisfactorily, and not create a safety problem on Main Street. The report does indicate there would be a very slight uptick in average delay times at the Main Street and Maple Avenue intersection with the construction of the project. Delay times would go from about fourteen point one seconds on average to about fifteen point three seconds per vehicle during the AM peak hours. So you might be waiting in line a little bit longer to turn down Maple Avenue during the AM hours, school time hours. Also indicated in the report is the potential of vehicle overlap. So as you can, as you would imagine, vehicles trying to turn left, going east into town, would want to turn left into the preschool site, could conflict with traffic heading west on Main Street trying to turn down Vera Avenue, which, there was a few cars that turned down Vera Avenue in the AM peak hour, not many. But they could have some conflicts there of both trying to enter that striped turn lane at the same time. So the report did kind of mention that that was one of the issues there, but it wasn't significant enough to warrant anything different than just noting it in the traffic report. To mitigate for the impacts, the suggestion is for the eastern driveway, so the, the closest driveway to Maple Avenue, be for inbound traffic only, and that both driveways exiting the project be signed for right turn exits only onto Main Street. So they don't want traffic crossing over and trying to turn left and head eastward into town when there's a lot of traffic trying to, in that intersection in the morning. So both, both exits should be signed for right turn only. The study indicated that while a Maple Avenue connection, that, we did look at having a Maple Avenue connection, forcing a driveway there. They did show that the Maple Avenue connection uses an entrance into this preschool would alleviate potential vehicle conflicts in the, on the Main Street, two-way left turn lane. It did not, however, improve traffic congestion at Main Street, and even potentially worsen traffic congestion on Maple. So if you've driven down Main Street during school hours, Maple, or Main Street has a little bit of congestion, turn down Maple, there's a lot of congestion during the times when kids are getting dropped off or picked up. A cop, again, a copy of the report was in, in your staff report if you had an opportunity to go through it. The current general plan land use for the property for the preschool is urban core, which means it was developed property when the city incorporated back in nineteen forty-five. The, the urban core land use covers a wide array of allowable zoning, including residential, professional offices, and light industrial, however, it does not include for schools. So since the applicant is desiring to construct the preschool, they are requesting to change the general plan land use to S dash ES, which is for elementary schools. Along with the general plan land use amendment, the applicant must also rezone the property. It's, it's zone for single-family residential, so they would be rezoning it to PS, which is public semi-public, which is what all the public, the other schools here in town are zoned. So in September, the planning commission did ha, hold a public hearing on this project. They voted to approve the project, and then also recommend that the city council adopt the, the secret document, and also the city council to approve the general plan land use change and the rezoning of the property. There is an added condition of approval in, in the staff report. As we went through the traffic impact analysis, they did study a certain number of kids present at the school at one site. The school is actually built bigger than that. It could, it could accommodate more kids according to state law requirements as far as square foot per student. The, the traffic study, studied a, a maximum number of a hundred and five students on campus at, at one time, which is lower than what the school could actually hold. So the condition that's being, being added is if, if Ripon Christian ever wants to exceed that number, they would come back to the city of Ripon, and we would open up discussions and possibly even look at a further study at some point to, to look at exiting requirements, parking requirements and such, because the site is not designed necessarily to handle that extra load. So at that such, at such point in future, if that happens, then we would have a, have a mechanism to, to reconvene on that issue. So this would be a document that it entered into, it's much like a project improvement agreement that the engineering department puts together. It gets recorded, so it is a recorded document against the property. So that is a, an added condition that we are asking the council to add to the, the recommendation here this evening. And with that, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thanks, Ken. Appreciate it. I do see Jake with, has to comment.
Ken, I just want to make sure I'm understanding something correctly. So when you're talking about the double right-hand turn lanes, so then currently, as it's constituted, you can make a left to go into town towards downtown, that's going to be eliminated, correct? And it's just going to be two right-hand turn lanes, right? Am I understanding that correctly?
So, out of that, out of the preschool site, so the preschool site now is, is an existing home.
Correct. So coming back, so we're talking about coming back onto Maple, not even entering Main Street right now, right?
Right. Not on Maple at all. This is, so basically, we are going to be limiting turns out of the preschool site to a right turn only.
Okay.
Not Maple Avenue.
Okay, so, okay, so you can make a right turn onto, onto?
On to Main Street.
Onto Main Street.
On the preschool site.
Okay.
That was my question.
Okay.
So that, that is going to be a requirement? Because the traffic study was kind of wishy-washy about it.
The traffic study, I mean, they look at, they looked at the, kind of AMP, they, they looked at the whole day worth of traffic. Where you have the issues is the AM peak hour, which is when school's coming in, and the PM peak hour when school's letting out. So their suggestion was to, to require a right turn onlys out of those driveways only during morning hours and possibly the afternoon hours. So it's, it gets a little confusing, because now you got a sign that says right turn only and between the hours of this and this and this. It's, it's probably easier just to say no, is to say right turn only out of these driveways all the time, just so you kind of get, you know, habit forming and, and stuff like that.
I agree.
Well, you could actually design the exit that way to where you can only make the right-hand turn.
You can design the exits that way, and the, one of the suggestions from the traffic consultant was not to do it that way, because if, if something's not working quite right, you've got a lot of improvements to go out there and mess with driveway entrances and sidewalk, and a lot of money being spent to reconfigure something that is easier to deal with with signage at this point, and if it's, if it's working fine, then that's, that's kind of the route they.
You could actually put temporary stuff in there very inexpensively, if, if that's what you wanted to do. Jake, you guess?
Well, no, my recommendation was just going to be that. It was just to create a little sign that says you can only do this during school days or school hours. You know, it, it's fairly common, once you get to, you know, larger areas, to have that, just little caveat to where it opens it up during the rest of the time, it's just during those peak traffic hours. So that would just be my recommendation. So it's to just, you know, during, you know, the, the school hours when it's, you know, eight to nine, two to three, whenever it is, you know, to do that, and then the rest of the time, it, open it up.
And we know everybody will follow that, so we.
Right. We're talking just out of the parking lot, right, though?
Yes.
More than likely, people aren't going to be traveling in and out of this thing all day long, and so the majority of people aren't going to be coming in at those hours anyway. So if you did it all day, it's not really going to affect the five people that are traveling in and out the rest of the day, I'm assuming. So, and all day is probably simpler and easier way to go, right? And so, a second question, the hundred and five cap, what was the total capacity of the building, do you know?
Um, I, I should have wrote that down. I don't know offhand. It was somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and some, two hundred and ten or two hundred and five students at one time. Based on what state standard says is enough square footage for a student. So the school had no desire to go to that, that level at this point, and so the study kind of looked at a capacity that they thought would be maximum for them, and that's what was studied. So that's why if it exceeds that, then we need to get back together and look at different things. Parking could become an issue at that point, and then also traffic and ingress and egress.
So a hundred and five is acceptable from the school?
I believe so. Yep, we've worked with them on this condition, so.
Okay.
It's actually, the maximum capacity is one thirty-two based on preschool, which is slightly different, so we're a little bit less, but the two-ten was actually because of local exceptions.
Leo?
I just have a comment to counter Mr. Parks's comment. I, from years of experience with parents, the idea that they can handle change during the day, and between eight and ten, they go one way, and ten and two, they can go another way, and then two to four, they got to go, not going to happen.
All day long, right?
Yeah. It needs to be the same all the time, because I agree with, Daniel.
Senior moment.
It's only been a year.
Yeah, I know, no, it's, I'm getting older. The amount of traffic in the non pickup and drop-off times is going to be so small, it's not going to be a, a problem. But the other reason I look at it is our people, police department, if they get called over there, they need some consistency. They can't be looking at their watch and getting into an argument with somebody about, well, it was ten oh five, so I could do that. It's just consistent, you're talking about a half a block to get and go where you're going to go. And I think it needs to be the same. Just, you come out of here, you turn right, and then good luck. That's from my point.
Okay. Dean?
Thank you, Leo. I see it's too many places in town.
Go ahead.
Hey, you know, we'll be here all night then.
No, we won't.
We've got a three to two, two bullet leave.
Okay, if there's no other comments from the council, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public would like to address this issue? Okay, seeing nobody, I will close the public hearing. Should council agree, well, okay. So what do you guys want to do?
I'm going to make a motion.
I was going to make, I was going to make a motion. Go ahead, Leo.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the resolution that's presented with the addition of the upper lim, current upper limit, that they come back and talk to us if it goes higher, and that the signage be right turn only.
All day.
All day.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a move, we have a second. Whenever you're ready, Jake.
I'll take one. Oh, no. No, because it's not that, it's, it was a, it was a mine thing. I'm not going to vote, get me to vote, no on it.
Okay, five oh vote. Thanks, Ken. Okay, four A. First reading introduction ordinance, rezones property owned by Ripon Christian School located eight thirty-nine West Main Street.
So this is part two that goes with the staff report that just occurred. This is first reading and introduction of the ordinance, so it'll come back next month for second reading and adoption.
So we had a motion, what do you want to do, though? You can't just move, do you want to?
You want to adopt the ordinance?
So we have a motion to adopt the ordinance. We have a second?
Soon as the mover moves.
Well, I know you're waiting for my votes, right?
That's right.
We might have some discussion.
Oops.
Hey.
How did you vote, Jake?
Uh, I voted yes.
Jake voted yes. Sorry, he was, he was delaying over here. Okay, passes. Second one is first reading introduction ordinance, amends chapter twelve point two-eight camping, sleeping, and motor vehicles and storage of personal property of the Ripon Municipal Code. Is that Chief, or is that Ken, or who is it?
I just started.
Hi, Kevin?
It was kind of a team effort in this. About a year ago, I think it was January twenty-seventeen, the city council passed a, an ordinance related to camping. Since that ordinance was passed, and our staff has been enforcing this, there was a couple changes that staff is recommending the city council consider that, consider. These are shown in track changes in the council packet. One of the changes that is being proposed is that camping not being allowed on, on private property. Initially, it had stated private property, property where the public does have access. So that was one of the changes, along with a, a couple others that, that you see in the agenda. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Leo?
I have two things. One, I thought that I had read someplace that homeless people had a right to sleep, like between dawn or dusk and dawn on public property. Am I, did I read that wrong, or is something changed?
Well, the law, there's been a number of changes in the law, as you know, and this is, this is a hot issue right now. There was a federal case, Bell versus Boise, which was, has now been discussed, discussed a, a lot, but has been actually dismissed, so it's not binding authority at this point. This language is actually the same that was used in the Allen versus Sacramento case, which was actually upheld, and therefore, it's consistent with the language that we have. So, you know, I'm not going to say that the law will never change again, because this is an evolving area. But as the ordinance is drafted today, it's consistent with federal law.
Okay. And number two, do I read this right, that if somebody has a relative that has a motor home, and they drive it into Ripon, and they park it on the street and plug it into their house, because they're going to sleep there while they're visiting? According to this ordinance, they can't do that?
That's correct. And I know the chief has some thoughts on that as well, and we talked about that in the staff meeting this morning.
Okay. Because I know it happens.
All the time.
Yeah.
Where was this twenty-five years ago, when my in-laws were coming every weekend? Never mind.
I just wanted to make it clear, because I was a little bit taken aback when I, I don't know if I disagree or not.
I believe they can come in and get a, a permit with the police department, and they can camp on private property for up to three days, with that.
That means they got to pull in the driveway.
That's right.
There, there's actually two ordinances that kind of cover the RV parking on a residential street. Part of it's covered under the camping ordinance, but a majority of it's covered in the recreational vehicle parking ordinance, where you're allowed to park it in front of your residence for forty-eight hours prior to and returning from a trip. You can come in to the police department and receive a permit. Usually those permits are for up to fourteen days or two weeks. They're free of charge. They're free of charge, you just have to register it. I approve it, as long as you meet certain restrictions, and you can park it from your home.
Can occupy it?
You can occupy it during the day, you're not supposed to sleep in it, you're not supposed to make it a living quarters, and you cannot plug it in with either, through a sewer or electrical, or, or water. So basically, the parking permit only allows you to park it on the street for up to those fourteen days.
Park it, not occupy it.
Correct. And that's been on the books for...
And this ordinance says the same thing, that you can't occupy it.
Yes, so this ordinance also gives you the ability to, to park it on private property for up to those three days for, for camping, where the RV permit par- parking does not allow you to occupy it.
Okay.
I'm going to make a comment on that, because I noticed that on some of the small streets of town, where people are parking their trailers and their motorhomes, and they obviously are spending the night, and, uh, the danger in it is, is when they pop up their pop-ups, they're halfway out the street. To me, it's just an accident waiting to happen. I can just see some poor guy laying there with his head there, some guy comes by and wipes out that pop-up.
Did you know the last time around the council, we had people complaining all the time about motorhomes? I don't know if that's what it was.
Yeah, the blinds on the turns and stuff like that, yeah.
Rick, that, that falls underneath the RV parking ordinance, where they're, again, not allowed to have any hookups, they're also not allowed to extend the pop-ups, uh, or pop-outs, that block sidewalks are protruding into the street. We usually respond to those on a complaint-only basis.
So for an example, my neighbor there has like a sixty-foot motorhome, that's almost as big as my house, he can no longer plug it in and have his family live there? I mean, his relatives visit?
He wasn't supposed to be doing anything.
No, he'll be happy, I'm just asking.
Not on a residential street. You can park it up to three days on a private property and allow...
It's too big for private property, okay.
All we need is somebody to call in on that complaint, we'll respond.
Yeah, that'll happen. I don't care. Any other questions, comments?
I'll move that we adopt the ordinance. Is this first reading?
Yeah.
First reading and introduction.
Can we, yeah, that's what we do, or do we waive it? Waive the first reading and...
And introduce the ordinance, correct. That's what you're doing?
That's what I'm doing.
And that's what the second did?
I already did it.
Okay. Whenever you're ready, Jake. You forgot how this works.
I guess.
Item five, discussion item SSJ GSA twenty eighteen operating budget. Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, and we've talked about in the past, the city of Ripon has chosen to participate in the South Selwyn Keen Groundwater Sustainability Agency, along with SSJID and the City of Escalon. For twenty seventeen, SSJID offered to pay all of the expenses that was incurred as part of operating that groundwater agency, although for twenty eighteen, that's no longer the case. So a budget has been prepared, the total budget for twenty eighteen is two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars. This includes the consulting services required to review the technical work that's being done in the overall groundwater basin. It includes administrative and legal support, and also our groundwater sustainability's agency's share of the cost to prepare the groundwater sustainability plan, which is part of the legislation. Just one thing I would note about that, is that the budget you have in front of you does assume that the overall basin receives a grant to offset the cost of that plan. So this would be our share after, after the grant money is applied. Obviously, if the grant is, does not come to fruition, we'll be coming back to the city council for an increase to that budget. The other part of the, the staff report is the discussion of allocating those expenses. What has been, what is being proposed is that is based off the historical groundwater extraction. So with that methodology, the city Ripon's share is about ten percent, so it'd be just over twenty-two thousand dollars for twenty eighteen. And that methodology is going to be reviewed year, year after year. So the overall increase to the seventeen eighteen budget, I would just note that, that budget ends in June thirtieth, twenty eighteen, so you'd have that eleven thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, and then the future eighteen nineteen budget would include a full share, full annual share of, of the expense. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I, I have a question, if nobody else has a question. So if, if I remember right, we had to do this anyway, correct?
Yes.
So if we did it ourselves, it would cost far more than twenty-two thousand dollars.
Paying the full bill.
Well, some piece of that, we wouldn't be doing the whole thing, but, yeah, so this is a smart way to do it. Okay, I just wanted...
It's a good partnership.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns, motion?
So move.
Second.
Okay, motion carries. Thanks, Kevin, appreciate it. B, Meadowwood Development. Meadowwood subdivision development, should the city council agree with the planning commission and staff recommendations, the following motions would be appropriate. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow council members. As you recall, in November of last year, we did hold a public hearing on, on this project for the development agreement and the tentative subdivision map for the Meadowwood project. At that meeting, we, we were presented a, what was called a cash flow solution for the project, and so council actually kicked that back to staff to review and, and come back with some recommendations. So that is the, the staff report that's here in your packet in front of you this evening, is, is a kind of detailed analysis of that cash flow solution and some recommended action. Since the staff report was released, we have had, been able to meet with the developer several times now to kind of flush out some more ideas and options for making the project lea- the project a little more financially feasible for the developer. So since the planning commission meeting and city council meeting in October, we, we did kind of throw out an idea of improving, not under, not having underground the canal until, say, fifty percent of the homes were built. So we're going to issue about fifty percent of the building permits for, for houses that were furthest away from the, the canal, to give them an opportunity to build up some cash flow in the project before requiring the undergrounding of the canal. So that's still in there as an option for the council to consider, i- is to pushing that back to where they can build up to fifty percent of the homes. Couple other ideas over the last several days that were identified, which we think have some merit in, in helping a little bit with the project, is, is, is pulling the building permits into a two, two-phase cycle instead of a three-phase, they were additionally over a three-year period. Since the project is not likely to get started, or houses being built in two thousand eighteen, we can actually split the permits into two phases over two thousand nineteen and twenty, and still say, stay with underneath our, our three percent cap that the council adopted. So that would be a, a recommendation as well, is to actually put, put the building permit cycles into two, two phases instead of three, with forty-four permits in each of those phases. And then the last item that was identified was, there's actually an eight-foot masonry wall that was on the project as proposed on the southern boundary, southernmost boundary of the project, where it would have but a future non-residential. So actually, taking that requirement out, and when the non-residential project builds, it is a requirement within our municipal code that they put up an eight-foot masonry wall, so that would be something that the non-residential project could tackle when that, when that gets developed on that site. So we felt there was some merit to that, and that could be added to some of the conditions for approval of the project. We did go over these with the developer. They met, their, their legal counsel met with their staff, with their clients, and so you do have the addendum to the staff report on your desk, and we also did get a letter from them saying they concur with the conditions and are in agreeance with those. So with that being said, I will turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
Okay, any comments, questions from the council? Mr. Zubor?
If the eight-foot masonry wall is being taken away as a requirement, is there still going to be some kind of fencing there to...
There would be, I mean, you're, you're talking about people's backyard, so there would be a requirement for fencing, and they could do actually wood fencing there if they 'd like, because that would be going away at some point with the masonry wall. So there would be some, much like a residential fencing that would go along the back there.
Just wanted to make sure.
Anybody else? No? Okay. No, it's me, it's me.
Oh. It's you? Oh.
I have to...
So you want a motion to adopt the development agreement?
There's a recommended motion at the bottom of the addendum there that includes the added conditions, which we could actually amend the development agreement to include those, so when it comes back for first reading and introduction.
These two that you just gave us.
Yep.
You might want to let them say something, I forgot.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Does anybody, George, you want to come and make any comments?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is George Petralakis, I represent the, the applicant for this project. I want to thank the staff, your city attorney, city manager, and city planner for meeting with us and spending a lot of time on this matter. We agree with it the way it is tonight, you know, as the letter says, we remain a little concerned about the feasibility, but this way, we get it, we, we cost it all out, we'll take it to market. It's less urgent now, we had a contract with, with a home builder, but it's out of contract now, so it's a good time for us to, to try to make this scenario work. So that's what we want to do, and we appreciate everyone's assistance, and we agree with the staff recommendations on the three items. And I'm happy to answer any questions, if anyone has any.
Thank you, George, appreciate it. Any questions of George? Okay, anybody else? Okay.
I will move, as stated on the second page of the addendum to the staff report.
Okay, is that, is that good for you?
Good enough?
Is that good for you? Okay.
That's recommended actions one and two, as listed on the page.
Yes.
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Okay, so we have a motion?
Oh.
We have a second? And we have a five oh vote. Thank you. Thank you. Reports. Chief?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Honorable City Council. Just one brief item, on February twenty-eighth, at nine AM, we'll be swearing in two new dispatchers, or dispatch center. Elizabeth Millard and Davina Rodriguez will be sworn in to occupy...
What time?
Two vacancies, at nine AM.
Nine AM to twenty-eighth?
Yes, sir.
You'll be sending out emails, Chris?
He wants to know if you're going to send him a reminder email.
Yes, I can do that.
For me and Leo.
Do it on the twenty-ninth.
I'll be going to have donuts.
We can arrange donuts and coffee.
Anything else, Chief? That's it?
That's it.
How are you guys doing?
Doing very well. We have two officers that we hired back in the end of December, they're in their third phase of fill training program, and they're expected to be about four more weeks before they're out on their own. Both of them are doing really well.
Good, good to hear. Ted, any other?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have three items. Start with our water conservation numbers for January, compared to two thousand thirteen, we're eleven point seven four percent reduction. Also, we'll report that city staff is in the prog- process of finalizing the specifications and bid documentations for the maintenance of the landscape, landscape maintenance districts, along with landscape medians. Staff's hoping to get these out to bid next week. And then, last item is that about a year and a half ago, the Historical Society approached the city council about obtaining a surplus cannon, getting approval to obtain a, a surplus military cannon. Unfortunately, they weren't successful, government just didn't have any available. Recently, and this was to be placed at the Veterans, Veterans Park and Veterans Museum, recently, the cannon at the, the high school became available and was donated to the Historical Society, and the Historical Society is planning on, we've had a committee that's met and has picked a site, and I'm not sure if everybody's familiar with the cannon that was at the high school. It's a Howitzer, it, Howitzer Cannon. I've given you pictures, pictures of the cannon. Several folks have come together and sandblasted it, repainted it, put new tires on it, and the plan is, is to put it at the, the museum, at the same location that was looked at by the city council back a year and a half ago. We're hoping to get this installed, get this installed before the almond blossom, if everything works out correctly, so I just wanted to bring everybody up to speed on that.
Thanks, Ted, appreciate it. That's it? Kai, anything to report?
Nothing to report.
Nothing, Ken?
No, I have nothing.
Nothing? James?
Oh, my stuff.
Tom?
I have one question. Where are we on the River Road project?
Good question.
I know it got split off, and I've been out there, and I see the, I don't know what you call them, the bases for the stoplight, or, you know, the traffic signals are being put in, but what, where are we relative to the widening part of that thing?
Yeah, the widening part, we've been dealing with cow fences, you know, the, the, the last part of last year for, for the environmental phase of that project, and it's still in their hands right now. They've got everything, I've been in contact with them weekly, and so we're just kind of waiting to, to get the finishing touches put on that environmental, to get cleared to go out to bid for that project.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, our new offices are open, and so I encourage you all to come die some time and take a look, have a cup of coffee with us, we'll show you around.
Same, same location, right?
Same location, just right next to our.
Okay. Kevin?
I have nothing to report.
Nothing? Dan?
Nothing other than to say thank you to the members of the public that are here, as usual.
Okay.
Nothing to report?
Dean?
Nothing to report.
Vice Mayor Zubor?
I have two things. One, I want to acknowledge the, I don't know what you call it, landscaping work that the city crews have been doing around town, as far as that area by the library, that used to look like, I don't know, but now it's been taken care of, barked and everything, it looks really nice, and I see they're working on the planters and stuff down on Main Street, so I want to acknowledge your effort as well as theirs. And then just, the recycling thing was in the paper today, and if you haven't been down there, things are starting to change. We have a, the new compactor is here, and American Recycling is doing some final checking and stuff. I'm assuming the trenching is for power, it's going to be moved down there, they cut the blacktop, and a tree's been removed, so people have been showing up and seeing things are different, and so we're telling them that hopefully, in sometime this summer, it'll all be done, and then, you know, the capacity's going to go way up, not just for the cardboard, but everything, and hopefully, the reorganization will make an already successful program even better.
So Christmas won't look like a disaster area over there?
Probably will, it'll be a bigger disaster, but it'll be quicker, it'll be easier to get rid of it.
Exactly.
That's it.
Well, I go there twice a week, and I was dumping stuff off, and Mrs. Zubor was taking stuff out, I guess I got it figured out the wrong way or something, I don't think so. I just have one thing, I want to say that I sat in for Dan on the economic, economic development committee with the chamber.
Thank you for doing that.
You're, you're welcome. And Ken did a very good job of explaining fees, how we got there, and I've got to tell you, the, 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 the understanding, you don't think there's an understanding as much as I do, but there's an appreciation more of how we get to charging fees and the process we go through, we don't just throw darts on the wall. They really understood it, it's like... We don't just throw darts on the wall. They really understood it. It's like, oh, now we kinda get it. Yeah, you gotta, you know, have better water system somewhere down the road, that's what pays for the fees. The other thing that was important was when we got to the end, there were several things. Uh, one person said, you know what, Ripon's a lot nicer town than anything around it. Charge the fees that you need to charge. Another person brought up, which I didn't look at it mathematically this way, the difference between the highest city fee and the lowest city fee is the difference between point six percent of the total construction cost versus point seven. So it's a very small amount relative to other places. So I think it was a great educational, um, uh, meeting for everyone there and everybody at the end ended up agreeing. So I think that was probably the one best source of, of sharing information that I've seen in a long, long time. So that committee's, I think, pretty good. So thank you. You did a good job.
Provide us with a report in that meeting?
That's it, you just got it. It was better than what I heard from you the last meeting.
The last meeting was the first kickoff meeting.
That's right.
So what happened there?
I told you, it got kicked off.
Okay, so with that, anything else? Meeting adjourned.